I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Garden City Planning Commission. It's Thursday, September 20, 2021, at 6:30. Our first order of business is to say the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You seated? Uh, would the Secretary take the roll call, please?
Yes. Chairperson May.
Here.
Commissioner Steenburgh.
Here.
Commissioner Turnbull. I'm to be absent. Commissioner Walls. Commissioner Kalidus.
Here.
Commissioner Medevire.
Here.
Commissioner King.
Here.
You do have a quorum with five members, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We need approval of the agenda if someone would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion's made and supported to approve tonight's agenda. Any comments or questions? There are none. Take your roll call.
Yes. The motion maker was King. How do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Medevire.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
Commissioner Steenburgh.
Aye.
Commissioner May. Our chairperson May.
Aye.
Thank you.
I should be over in minutes with the regular meeting order 12/20/21.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any corrections or comments? Take your roll call.
All right. The motion maker was Commissioner Steenburgh. Do you vote?
Uh, aye.
Okay. Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Medevire.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Next item on business is public comment on non-agenda items only. And at this time, we have no one in the audience, so I believe we can move on. Our first business item is EPL 21-0023, request for site plan approval to establish a medical marijuana primary caregiver growing operation at 32537 Park Lane in the Illinois Light Industrial District. Could we have your report, Mr. Ottega?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. We're here tonight to consider the revised site plan for this proposed primary caregiver medical marijuana grow facility at the site at 32537 Park Lane. As mentioned previously, this is an existing structure. The applicant is proposing to take the, to construct seven separate rooms within the building that would, each room would house one caregiver that would have the potential to grow up to 72 plants if that caregiver has five patients under their care, because they are allowed to grow 12 plants for each patient plus 12 plants for themselves. The applicant has looked at, has taken our comments from your previous meeting and revised the plan. The medical marijuana caregivers require site plan review and approval only and, but they are some specific requirements with regards to medical marijuana growing. They do meet the location and setback requirements still as discussed. With regards to the wastewater, the standards of the ordinance is, are such that they are, have to be designed and operated to minimize the amount of pesticides, fertilizers, and other potential contaminants discharged into the public wastewater or stormwater system. They revised the sheet SP1 in the site plan and are now utilizing a 3,250 gallon oil and grit separator, still located in northeast portion of the building. They provided a detailed cut sheet of this piece of equipment and for this type of treatment. And it's something that's similar to other, that's being utilized in other facilities in other, in other communities, I should say, for, for this type of use. I will note, too, that the requirement for wastewater treatment is not something that's a standard for the state level marijuana regulatory agency rules or statutory requirements. They don't, they don't address it. Other local municipalities do address the issue, but we're having a difficult time finding someone who's, who's had experience with these uses because it's kind of a, once again, it's not as prevalent in all communities and then it's not as, hasn't been well established in the field when it comes to this. I did talk to the RDPS director for the city. He indicated that as far as he's, as, he indicated or reminded me that the wastewater system connects to the overall Metro Detroit Great Lakes Water Authority system and ours particularly goes to the Rouge Valley wastewater treatment plant. He hasn't heard any concerns at that plant of marijuana treatment, marijuana uses having a detrimental impact in the wastewater treatment, just in terms of frame of reference of, you know, how these facilities operate and the scale that we're dealing with, because obviously the standard is there. We still, the applicant still has to comply with it. I just wanted to give you some frame of reference with regards to what, what is happening in this particular industry in the area. So I thought I had found a particular professional engineer that could take a look at it, but they, they also indicated they're not as comfortable with reviewing it. So we are still, so beyond that, I haven't had yet a professional to look at this system other than our next, my next, I mean, our objective would be to communicate with other municipalities that have these facilities and talk to them about their approval process and utilize their professionals, utilize them in the local scale with that. And it's also something, and we're going to get into it when we get into odor control, that these type of reviews are typically done at the building permit phase. While they're definitely a concern at the site plan phase, this is something that requires, that ultimate approval will require detailed construction document level drawings that will have to be reviewed by inspectors, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire, building inspectors. So, so that's one of the reasons why, when it comes to the wastewater, our recommendation would be that any site plan approval could possibly be contingent upon the approval of the proposed treatment system by a wastewater treatment expert at the building permit level. Getting into the odor control, the applicant has submitted a narrative with the, with the application and they've gone in to discuss their proposed equipment. It includes utilizing carbon scrubbers and ozone generators to mitigate the odor. The applicant notes that it's a MERV 13 rated filter. I took a look at the scale of these, these, these filters and based on, on the, what are they called? The American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers, it's a superior commercial filter from 13 to 16 and 16 is, is at the high range of these filters. The application does not include a mechanical level construction plan. I did, I did speak to the mechanical inspector for the city. He said that it's, that the proposed utilization of these two pieces of equipment, the ozone generators and the carbon scrubbers, that that's the way, that's what he would be looking for and that's what would be required. However, he does say that at the building level review for the building permit, he would be reviewing it specifically to know how it's connected, because he said there's going to be multiple levels of air handling that are going to be required. But at that, at this time, he didn't have enough detail to indicate if the proposed system would be adequate just yet.
May I ask a question on that point?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just, obviously, I think we talked about last time, this being fairly new to the city and us trying to kind of understand what the implications are. Do we know what's a commercially reasonable standard for this MERV rating for this type of facility? So in other words, would, would 13 be adequate or do we know that?
We only know that that's the kind of standard that's been utilized in other commercial level marijuana grow facilities. So this is a caregiver facility for the, for the caregiver, for the standard adult use or medical marijuana grow operations that have, you know, 500, 1,000, or 1,500 plants. These are the type of pieces of equipment they use. I would think just from a layperson's standpoint that the, that the size and scale of that system will probably be upgraded and more extensive than this one, because this one would be a smaller amount of air volume that they're going to deal with versus the square footage needed to occupy, you know, up to 1,500 plants. But having said that, this is, they utilize the same operation. I'm actually familiar with one facility in the northern suburbs and they use the same two pieces of equipment, just at a larger scale. Now whether it's effective, unfortunately, it's, it's going to come down to, for lack of a better word, the sniff test, when, if it can be discernible at the outside, which is our stand, which is our way, we write our, we've written our ordinance, that the odor can't be discernible from the outside of the building. You can't know that until you're outside really, you know, sniffing it, because the professional will say, oh yeah, this should be enough, but you don't know until how they operate. Yes, sir?
Um, as we go through this, I hate to stop you midstream, but as we go through this, are we looking at these items to be the responsibility of the building owner and operator? Are we still talking about all the individual leases or renters taking care of all these things individually for their own little area?
No, definitely not, because the building operator and owner would be the one that would have to deal with the wastewater, the odor, and the security, because they are the one getting the site plan approval.
Absolutely.
When the individual, and when we get down to it and talking about the individual caregivers, they'll be leasing the individual unit and the only thing they're going to be reviewed for is making sure they're compliant with all their licensing from the state, that they actually are licensed primary caregiver. And then it's going to be, and I believe the narrative of the, of the applicant speaks to the fact that even the access to the building is going to be done in such a way to, that it's going to be the building owner's responsibility and not the individual tenants. So these three things, wastewater, odor, security are the, are the responsibility of the building owner and they're going to have to be reviewed and approved by the professionals at the, at a minimum at the building permit review level. And it's up to you whether you want to see this at your level right now at the site plan or if you wanted, if you're comfortable at a certain point with saying this can be reviewed, the details of mechanical system, the wastewater system and the odor and the security can be approved by the professionals at the building permit level.
I, I, I think of this and put it in terms of like the prevailing laws for a condominium. Whether you own, are buying, lease, or rent, you're responsible for the interior of your space, pretty much. You want to change the color of the walls, carpeting, furniture, et cetera, et cetera. When it comes to knocking a hole in the wall and putting in a new bay window, you don't have that, the right to do that. You also don't have the responsibility for that, nor the, the heating and the HVAC system or the roof and et cetera, et cetera. So we want one point of contact.
Yes.
Thank you.
So with regards to the odor control, we have, our mechanical inspector for the city does say that while the pieces of equipment proposed are appropriate and what's going to be necessary, he can't necessarily say right now how effective it's going to be without seeing a mechanical plan. And then finally, with regards to the security and the narrative, they provide a lot of indication as to how they will be operating the, the security level of the facility. They, hammer's proposed on the, on the, on the site plan. Unfortunately, I haven't had an opportunity to get any comments back yet from the police chief. The only thing I will say is that their security plan as proposed are more of the items that were, are required from a commercial level adult use or medical marijuana facility that grow, once again, 500, 1,000, 1,500 plants. And they're a caregiver, which technically per our ordinance only is required to meet the requirements of the state statute, which is that it be kept in an enclosed locked facility. But they are proposing to have a higher level of security per request of the planning commission. And as we just discussed, the applicant is going to be the owner of the building and they're going to operate it. They're going to actually also have a property manager and then any, any caregiver that wishes to grow marijuana will have to apply for and submit the required documents for a CFO, application, certificate of occupancy, application, and then have that approved prior to occupying and growing in, inside any unit. So those are the issues specifically related to the medical marijuana growing operations. Some final comments with regards to general site plan. When it comes to parking and the required number of parking spaces, as we discussed last time, if this was only, if the site was only visited by the caregivers, the parking would be sufficient. If the site is going to be operated, occupied, or excuse me, visited by the patients, it would lend itself to be more of, introduce a retail character to the building. We agree with that. The project narrative of the applicant now has addressed that they're going to utilize a building manager that's going to have a, that's going to schedule any visit by any person other than the seven caregivers that are allowed on the site. So that would, the system would potentially mitigate, you know, any parking issues. If all the patients visited it at once, yes, that would definitely be, that would be a problem. But they propose this system, so we would just recommend any approval of the site plan be contingent upon the planning commission understanding the, the patient restrictions to the facility in terms of frequency, to make sure that that meets with your, your approval. They have revised the parking lot to the rear of the building. Now all parking spaces and the, all parking spaces to the rear are, have the appropriate required drive aisles in compliance with the zoning ordinance. They now have a required, the required loading docks area and the dumpster enclosure has been reconfigured to have a little bit easier access for the, for a dump truck. Landscaping has also been revised. It's a separate landscape plan now. They're proposing a hedgerow along the northern property line of the site adjacent to the sidewalk. That's compliance with standards. As I just mentioned, the trash dumpster enclosure is in compliance with zoning ordinance standards. A lighting plan has been submitted. They're going to be providing wall mounted lightings and two pole mounted fixtures. They're all shielded and directed downward, so it will increase the, the security of the site, because certainly it's not lit. So the, the lighting is in compliance with the standards. And then finally, things like signage will have to get separate application at that time if they require it. So the revised plan does meet a majority of the issues initially raised during our initial review. The proposed development is going to improve the function of the site. However, there's still several issues remaining related to the particular use. And these, as I've discussed, these, these type of things in the past and currently for other types of uses are addressed at building permit process, but that's up to you whether you feel that that's appropriate to allow that to be done at building permit or if you'd like to see those construction level detailed drawings for wastewater security, wastewater and odor control specifically at, at this point in time. So we would recommend that if there's any approval granted, it be contingent upon that the site visitation schedule for registered patients and that those limits, the total number of people on the site to 14, that would be our standard, recommended standard, that any site visits be limited to a total of 14 people on site. And that the approval of the proposed treatment system by wastewater treatment expert, approval of the odor control by the mechanical inspector, and approval of the security system by the police chief. With that, I will take any questions.
Mr. Medevire? I like the idea a lot about not allowing the recipients of the caregivers to just come and go willy-nilly. I like the appointment part real well, because without that integral in the security system, you do not have security. And what I, sitting up here, I look at worst case and best case scenarios. Worst case scenario, we could have people coming and going all the time. The caregiver, patient clientele could change from day to day, literally, and you could just be a walk-in marijuana store.
Well, the caregiver's going to appreciate as well, because now they can show their, their patients, look, you need to schedule this, this is my lease, don't just come bumping.
Right. And I'd like to see that integral with the security plan that the police department, that yes, they schedule it, but they keep a running log of who got scheduled, when they came in, when they, when they left, because you certainly don't want people willy-nilly wandering around your building for who knows how long. And that was one thing. The second thing is that I haven't been over there today or yesterday. Have you seen the dumpster enclosure?
No.
In the past, we've had dumpster enclosures that had wood slats and, and stockade fence enclosures and all different kinds of combinations of material, and they never held out. So the dumpster requirements that we have now are pretty robust, but then again, when you look at the trucks that come and pick up the waste, they're not little machines, they're big machines and we don't want them to bump something and destroy the whole thing. So I, I, I have a concern that the dumpster is, is designed and built to our existing But it sounds, sounds pretty good overall with the various things that we need to sign off on.
Let's move on to what the applicant made to presentation and then we can continue with Commissioner's discussion. One of you would like to come up and, could you give your name, please?
Good evening. Said Orbet.
Yes, Chief?
Yes. Yes, I do.
Could you like it?
From Orbet Design and Construction. I'm going to start addressing the last concern. The dumpster that we're proposing is built from masonry and concrete, CMU and brick veneer, and there is a detail that outlines the robust, the word that you're looking for, nature of that dumpster enclosure. It's well reinforced as well as it has the proper bollards to minimize any impacts from these trucks.
Protect it.
Yes, 100%. And the gate for that dumpster is pretty much on a good commercial grade that can take some beating. As far as the site, we did all the arrangements as per recommendations from Mr. Mario as far as parking and dumpster enclosure, loading zone, as well as the landscaping at the front. And the idea was to put it as close as possible to the sidewalk in order to create a nice screening effect. Again, the most important item that we talked about last time was the underground water treatment. I consulted with KSI, Kennedy Solutions, and he has been involved in these types of facilities in Lansing and other locations. And according to him, he did his study based on square footage and based on the type of use, and he provided me with a full narrative and details of the system that we have to install, which is called an HDPE Gravity Oil and Grit Separator. And it has a monitoring well in order to make sure that it is well monitored for the proper timing to siphon and take out all the excess oils and grits that could be locked into it. The capacity of this gravity and oil and grit separator is 3,250 gallons, which is substantial. The size of it is about almost six feet by 24 feet, I believe. And all the drainage system, except the wastewater, which is the toilets and whatnot, has to filter through it and then dispose any excess clear water that is out to the main sewer lines. There is some installation guidelines, maintenance guidelines, and some details inspection sheets about the system and the way it should be installed, and we intend to comply to their specs when it comes down to the construction documents as well as the construction phase. Odor control. We did talk with our mechanical installers as well as mechanical engineers. Like Mr. Mario stated early, beyond the units that we are proposing, the MERV 13 and the MERV 13 with the HIPAA compliant units and charcoal MERV 13 filters, pretty much everybody I spoke to, to consult with indicated that that would be the best system that anyone could look into installing in such facilities. Now the sniff, the sniff dust.
Not scientific.
That has to wait until the actual plans are in place and we'll have to do it. But if it happens to be a non-sufficient additional equipment, meeting these specs could be definitely installed at the time. I'll give you a small example. We have a restaurant running and you do have your filters, your hood, and your exhaust system. Yet sometimes you might get a whiff, I don't want to say a strong odor, you get a whiff of, but this is a very highly controlled and critical establishment where odor cannot leak out, the word may I use. Definitely, these systems by engineering standards, they meet the requirements. Now the charcoal has a very unique way in absorbing the particles, if I may say, that causes this odor. So we are proposing to do that. Any other questions on the technical aspect?
Does, where does this six foot by 24 foot, I, I can't find the dimensions.
It's the KSI.
Other than the, the capacity of 3250 gallons, I see the trench size, but not the physical size. But irregardless of that, where would this be put and does it require permission from Wayne County to tap into their sewer system?
Possibly. I did speak with one of the gentleman engineers at the Wayne County, Kasim is his name. I'm sure Mario know who he is. And he indicated that using such a system is, is okay by them, yet has to see the engineering plans for that matter, but he's one of the engineers I consulted with. And actually, believe it or not, he's the one who referred me to Kennedy Solutions. And currently, he is with the Wayne County Engineering. His name is H. Kasim. I'm sure Mr. Mario had crossed paths with him. He's a very capable engineer and he knows about how to do these designs properly. So that was his reference. KSI came from him, Kennedy Solutions.
Okay. That being said, where would the location of this be?
According to the plans, we have it at the northeast side of the building. It will be outside. It will be outside, so it's closer to the street. And all the other installations are going to come from the inside of the building. They go into the system, and the system will exit out after everything is cleaned up into the main sewer.
Isn't that where your driveway is, on the east side of the building?
Northwest, I'm sorry, did I say east-west?
Northwest.
Northwest, okay. So it'll be in your...
It's on the opposite side from the driveway.
In your front yard, basically?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, so anybody who wants to monitor... And they have to have a contractual agreement with a company that does clean up the system every now and then. Most definitely, it's gonna be Kennedy Solutions that is going to look into it, can come in and monitor the system without having to get into the property. So that's why we proposed that it goes somewhere in a very accessible public place.
Is this tank buried completely, or is it halfway...
Completely underground.
Is there gonna be fenced around?
It doesn't have to. It's buried underground, and it has just monitoring holes so you can have your equipment and monitor the amount of oils and grits inside.
But nothing will be around to protect it from something going over it?
We can, but this is an area where no cars and vehicles are supposed to be.
Supposed to be.
Yeah. But it's a good proposal. We don't see a problem by doing so. But these systems usually are installed in areas where there is heavy traffic, and they are designed to take the impact of vehicles passing over. They are made from concrete, and they do have the proper design to handle such loads.
Okay, and GLWA, they don't, do they have to be notified regarding all of this, or no?
I'm sorry, who are they?
Great Lakes Water Authority?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No, as far as I know, no. It is, it functions similar to any standard grease interceptor that restaurants use sometimes.
Right.
Yeah, it's no different, except this is designed to handle other types of materials, not just the grease. It handles the oils and, yeah.
Diane, concerning your question, on one of the pages to the rear, it shows a poly-coated steel cover. So it looks like that may be the, that's what's covering the access hole. One of the options anyhow.
Yes, you're looking at the riser installation options, I believe, right?
Yeah, I see you got East Jordan Iron Works here and poly-coated steel cover. If it's far enough from the driveway, any access points where a vehicle would normally be driven, then probably the poly-coated steel cover would be sufficient if it's where something can drive over top of it. If somebody slips off the driveway in the winter time, if it's only a foot away or something.
Sure.
I think I would opt for one of the other options, the East Jordan Iron Works. That's what they use in streets off a vehicle. You don't want a vehicle to slide off in the winter and destroy your system.
Even the truck that takes care of the cleaning part, they don't have to come nearby. They can run their hose and siphon whatever, you know, material.
And so far as your odor control, we're all concerned with that because we, along with other representatives in the city, of course, will get the phone calls about, "I smell this," or "I smell that." So it's to your advantage, we want you to succeed here.
Absolutely.
To your advantage to make sure that people in the neighborhood are not going to be smelling it and making phone calls and complain because...
Absolutely.
Nick Ritchie, to that fact, I mean, to this point, you know, we have 13,000 plants right there. So I just tried to bring a lot of these things that the city maybe do and then what failed, and then putting these things into place that aren't gonna fail. You know, as long as they shut the door, this will work. You know, as easy as that. And we wanna try to put people in here that are gonna shut their doors. You know, I don't wanna evict anyone, it's not the goal of this. So they succeed, and the odor protection does work that we put in place. At the end of the day, it's up to the individual to make sure he shuts the doors, and really, that's it, that's it.
Pretty simple.
I mean, that's it, as long as he shuts the doors and doesn't unplug the units, they're gonna work.
If I may, actually, it's a good point, I was going to bring it up. But that's why we have a building with no windows or openings other than the main access doors, which definitely by code have to have automatic closure device. Again, that would pretty much eliminate any odor leaking out through windows or any openings. So besides the proper exhaust systems or filtrations or the HVAC that handles all the air handling units, there are no openings to allow for such leaks.
And on the design, I don't know if it's on here yet, but when you walk into the facility, there's gonna be, you know, a room with an air cleaner scrubber in it before you enter the next section of the room. So there's gonna be that barrier there that's gonna constantly be scrubbing the air.
Like an airlock.
Exactly.
Did you have anything else you wanted to wrap?
Anything on the technical side?
No, from my end, pretty much, that's it.
Okay, well, if you have any questions for you, we'll... Right now, I'd like to move on and allow the commission to discuss the situation. I know I got a couple of, which is, of course, the design of the wastewater system and the odor system. I don't think any of us are qualified to review any of these plans. And so if they're reviewed at the building department level after we approve the general price line, I think that would probably be all right. One thing that was brought up is that we need to make sure that there's not any requirement for county review for connecting to the wastewater system with this kind of deployment. As far as security goes, I still have some issues with how that's being handled. We're talking about having a man on site from your company, a property manager, and he would be responsible for letting, making appointments and letting patients...
Not on site, no, no, he won't that much.
He won't be on site. Who will be on site to allow the customers to...
It's a patient, it's not a customer.
A patient, okay, patient.
Well, it's gonna be stipulated in the lease, if they violate their lease and we find out about it, we're gonna put them on notice, if they violate it again, we're gonna...
Who is, who's going to handle their visits, though?
There'll be a management company set up, and then the tenant, which is the caregiver, would have to contact the management company. And let's say he wants to schedule one of his patients to come in. And then the management company will call him back within 48 hours or so, thereabouts. And then they'll make sure that there's no two patients coming at the same time. Just clearance on scheduling matters. So the only ones that can come and go to the facility as they please without calling would be the tenants slash caregiver.
Caregivers, correct. When the patients come to visit...
They have to get clearance?
They have to get clearance, and somebody will accompany them when they go inside?
No, they'll be given a time, from the way we're thinking about setting it up. And then they come on schedule, and they will set that up with the caregiver. The caregiver, which is the tenant, would call the management company, say, "Hey, I want someone coming in," and say, "Wednesday." And then get a time, he would then contact his patient, say, "Wednesday at 3:30." And he would just pull up at Wednesday at 3:30, and the caregiver would let him in. And I understand what you're asking, how do we understand this is enforced? And I think the easiest way would be through the, one of the seven caregivers. If there's no parking spots available, they're gonna notify us. And then we can go back, we can use the cameras and see what the hell's going on. You know, but we can't, I can't, I don't see how we could enforce this 24 hours a day to make sure that there's no caregiver, patient showing up to the facility.
I just wanna make sure that the patients aren't allowed to visit on their own. I want them to be accompanied by the caregiver or by the property manager when they do visit the property. And as you said, only one at a time.
One at a time, so there's gonna be a set appointment for them to arrive and visit.
And they won't have access to the building only the caregiver?
Well, just the caregivers will have, just the caregiver has to walk them through.
May I bring to your attention a note from the security plan? The gate at the front of the building is a six-feet-high metal swing gate with security-coded panel. If you don't have an access code to this, you cannot just drive to the back end of the property. Which means if you have a patient scheduled to come at a specific time, he has to be allowed in through that gate in order to be able to access the facility itself. So this is a security implementation right at the beginning of the building, right at the front end. So you can't just pull in and walk in and...
No, but the caregiver could pass out those security codes as much as he wants.
Well, true, yes, but that's what will separate the men from the boys, if I may say. If he violates such agreements, then it's very simple that they're...
Into the lease. So basically, the only one that can contact the management company is the caregiver, which is the tenant. And then he'd schedule his patient coming in, which I don't believe there'll be much of it, but it's gotta be in the paperwork, and there's proof of it. And then they gotta get clearance within like 48 hours. And we'll have it set up in a manner where no two patients come at the same time, like they're not scheduled together.
No, also, also...
Will that be detailed in your security plan?
I'm sorry, can we have that?
Will that be detailed in your security plan?
Sure, sure.
Well, if I could, I believe, I believe a key question is, I mean, I hear you on the security gate to get into the parking lot, but now someone's gotta be able to get into the building.
Well, the caregiver...
Let me just get to my question. As far as getting access to the doorknob to open the door and to disarm the alarm, only the caregiver would have that access.
True, yes, yes, absolutely.
And the caregiver is growing from multiple patients, so he's not gonna give that...
I'm just trying to make a point that...
No, the patient would have no access to the building, other than calling the caregiver. It's like you calling the caregiver and say, "Hey, I wanna come check it out." Let's say you're a patient. They can't just go there. The caregiver's gotta give them a time, and then now the caregiver's gotta call the management company and then relay the information to his patient. And from my experience in life too, from being a caregiver, if you get patients that keep bugging you, you're gonna look for another patient. I mean, nobody really wants to deal with people like that.
Can you share, based on your experience in your other facility, what percentage of your patients are coming to say, "I wanna see my product"?
You mean if my estate project, or when I was caregiver?
Well, this, given this is a caregiver facility, I mean, is it 10%? Is it 5%?
1%.
Okay, that's, would be my assumption.
Very rare. Usually, they don't care about the plants, you know, they care about the product, what they're gonna leave with.
Sure, alright.
You know, and usually you don't go looking when you buy a cookie, you don't find out where it's made. Maybe once, but you're not gonna keep touring the same place.
May I also bring to your attention that the camera systems and the security systems are going to record. And these records would be, of course, reviewed...
In the cloud for a while.
Yeah, they're gonna be reviewed periodically to make sure that everybody is within their legal bounds on this. Now, if they notice that there is a caregiver who is violating such confidence, then...
Again, I think we'll be notified quicker than anything by another caregiver going in, like, there's nowhere for me to park. So we're gonna go to the cameras and be like, "What the hell's going on?"
Yeah, problems would soon come up and...
And then we gotta address, absolutely.
Okay. As long as those restrictions are included in your plan, I think, I think we'd be all right. I still think we should have the plan reviewed by the police department.
Absolutely.
Yes, Mr. Baber.
So if I understand this correct, there's not going to be a resident manager on the property 24/7? Or during the, are the operating hours going to be whenever somebody that has the code can go in? Can they go in at 3:00 in the morning?
No, no, it's gonna be 9:00 or 10:00 PM. I wanted to mimic what the state's doing. I think the state cuts it off at 9:00 or 10:00 PM, but I'll, we'll check. But it's for sure no later than 10:00.
So you're...
We're talking about having hours as part of the approval. Was that not included in the...
I think hours are state-organized, so they'd have to go through, you know, what the state says.
Well, actually, for commercial, yes, that's what it is, for commercial-level medical marijuana. But this is caregivers, so the statute for them, they're not even registered by the MRA. They are only measured, they're only, the only thing that they have to do is the caregivers have to keep and maintain their certification, and then the patients have to keep in their registration cards. And then beyond that, it's us.
They don't wanna violate laws, so they gotta be careful.
But I, but I think with the local, since this is local approval, you know, if we wanted to include those specifics of the operation. And actually, with the plan too, one thing to remember, as any other use in the city, the applicants will, and not only the building operator, but the tenants themselves, or each can assign. And I don't know if I've shared this as much with you, but we're now requiring all businesses to sign a use statement, in which, in addition to their application, we also, I complete a use statement which specifically lays out exactly the use permitted on the site, any specific restrictions, and then also any site plans that are associated with it. And then they actually sign that statement. And the statement includes a whole progress of, you know, they must maintain all their licenses up to date, valid, and they must provide copies to the city. They must operate in compliance with the use statement above. Any violation of that, any, any violation of those two would constitute a violation of the CFO. And then what a recent amendment that you just approved would state that, states that any violation of CFO gives the city to, the ability to mitigate any kind of violation, including an up-to termination of the CFO and the cessation of the business. And that's for any business in the city. And so just as any other, they're treated the same as any other business, and so they would have to abide by all your, your standards. So we have our local requirements, methods of enforcement to make sure that all uses are operating as you approve.
Well, that's part of the reason why I'm asking. So in the normal course of the day, whatever the hours happen to be, 7:00 to 9:00 PM, or 7:00 to 10:00, or 9:00 to 9:00, whatever that happens to be, the property won't have a manager, per se, on-site.
Just the caregivers.
So we're gonna be relying on the code at the gate and security cameras. And we're gonna be relying on the fact that the people, your customers, the caregivers, are adequate with their security, that they don't hand out this code willy-nilly, which is a lot of moving variable pieces.
Well, up to that fact, though, you know, the cameras that will be internally, so we can set perimeters, because the cameras will have AI on them, it's a standard now, where if there's any movement within the, you know, the area that's off limits in the secure zone past 11:00 PM, it'll notify us.
Well, that's what I'm getting to. So I want the police department to sign off on this, but especially since there's not gonna be one of your personnel on-site to monitor things, I wanna know that the cameras have footage available and backup to where if we have a question 11 days from now, we can go back and look. Somebody breached that security and did this and that.
Absolutely.
Who did that, so it can be corrected? So as part of that security apparatus, which I want the police department to sign off on, I would like to see the code changed on a regular basis, which I think might be something they would insist on, so that we don't just have... something they would insist on, so that we don't just have one standard number. It's one-one-one-one, easy. Everybody can remember it easy, don't forget, but it becomes so common that anybody can enter the property. Also, I'd like to see a backup on, most likely it's going to be a digital type system. I don't think anybody uses analog cameras anymore for security purposes. So I'd like to see that the, the police department dictate how long that backup should reasonably be. Is seventy-two hours good enough? Is that more or less like a standard that they would utilize?
I mean, I was planning on keeping probably at least fifteen to thirty days, but I'll keep whatever. I mean, it's just another charitable hardship.
But when the police department signs off on the security, which I want them to do, I, I would like to see that made a part of it. And if they're good with it, I'm good with it, because in the event that there's a problem, and I hope there's never a problem, and it's just smooth sailing, but if there is, I would like, you know, our city officials to have a mechanism to help correct it in conjunction.
For us to identify and fix the problem.
Okay.
What about the cards and stuff? Um, whatever security, but, you know, on that, like, I use RFID on everything, so everything is through scan codes. So if anybody gets evicted or whatever, they're all, everything's deleted and the new tenant will have new RFID's. So it's, everything will be scanned to get in. And then we see what time they scanned in, you know, that'll be internal, but if they give another code, they make another code, that has to go through us, so I see everything that's scanned through when it's scanned.
In, in relate, you have another facility, correct? And where's that located?
Warm.
Warm. How long has that been operational?
Two years.
And what has been your contact with the police department over that period of time?
Zero. Zero, we've had some internal theft, but that's, you know, that's internal theft.
Yeah.
I mean, petty, it's petty theft too, so you almost got to prosecute to make an example.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have a question?
I think we've covered almost everything. The only thing I, I didn't see added that I mentioned before is I would like to see approval from the fire department on white safety items for the building plan. Yes, I did, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. I have spoken to the fire marshal about the review, this particular facility, and I did provide him with some plans ahead of time. I just haven't heard back, I haven't, I, it was recent, so I haven't had, had opportunity to talk to him about it, but absolutely.
Okay. Well, I, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I think we could probably approve this contingent on the security plan being approved by the police department, fire department approving the building plan, the approval of the wastewater treatment, and incoming approvals that need to go along with that, and approval of the air handling system, the odor control system, which I'm not sure who you're going to get to look at it, but...
I will, in my discussions with the mechanical inspector, he was actually pretty confident in his ability to review it, because he actually has experience with a few of them. But I will make sure to let him know that we can, we can utilize outside review in case he feels that there's something missing.
Okay.
Or that, in case he feels that it's something that might be beyond his review and knowledge.
Yeah, okay. Anything else?
So police, fire, Wayne County to connect to their sewer system.
Odor control.
And the engineer for odor control.
And as part of the security system, only allowing one visitor at a time.
To be, to be written in...
Patient.
Written into the...
All being the lease, does that, or do you recommend doing, implementing it in other ways? That's all going to be as part of the lease, obviously, when we get to that?
Well, that should also be included in their security plan, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah. Someone want to make a motion?
That was...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve contingent upon police department approval of the security plan, fire department approval of the overall building structure, ingress and egress. Wayne County, so far as the attachment of the grit and grease separator-type apparatus to their sewer system, and the engineering firm that's going to take a look at the odor control and sign off on that. And of course, we want that to be in such a manner where you don't get complaints from the people in the neighborhood. And if, if that's how it works, then it's a perfect system.
We want what you want.
I second.
Okay, it's both made and supportive. And Mr. Ortega, are you okay with handling these approvals administratively after, if we approve?
Yes.
Okay. Roll please.
Yes, the motion was made by Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Seconded by Commissioner Colletis.
Aye.
Next to vote is Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Metavier.
Aye.
And Chairperson May.
Hi. Okay, your second one was approved.
Thank you so much.
Contingent on all of those buttons being approved, and you'll have to contact...
Absolutely.
We have a lot of work to do.
And just as a reference, your other facility that's been operating for two years, you might use that as part of your reference with the various departments. Because so much of this is new, that it, it might be to your benefit to help speed the process along, if you can say, such as, we've been using this odor control in this facility and not had any problems, and this building is the same number of square feet or whatever, whatever, we think that this is going to be more than adequate. That, that might be, that might help you with the various approvals of these different entities.
And that's only, you know, one thing too, on the thought that will bring your attention to, we have over a hundred employees, so how do you think that happens a little bit more with that kind of traffic to there?
Yeah. I can see...
Do your employees, do your employees have to be bonded?
Do you bond your employees or no?
The point being that, like, you know, there's this, the thought doesn't really add like that, people are scared off by the cameras and all that stuff, and we're truly very good at that.
Well...
But I will reference that, to that effect too.
And of course, keep in touch with Mario throughout all this.
Of course.
To make sure you can catch any, any little glitches as they go along, because some people may have questions we didn't have and...
Absolutely.
You know, the sooner you can get those ironed out, and sooner you can get your facility up and running.
Whatever we can do to make it smoother, absolutely.
Thank you so much for your time and...
Good luck.
Okay. Other business. Zoning ordinance amendments, discussion of revised draft zoning ordinance amendments related to the O-one district, this used district, smoking use standard, and license and access therapy. Mr. Ortega.
Yes. So in front of you are some revisions to the first draft you saw last time, based on your comments. Just going through the amendments one by one, the amendment one is, is about the elimination of the O-one district. It's pretty much stayed as, as you saw it last time. This would, you know, enact a, a proposal of the master plan to just eliminate this district, because these uses are just similar to what's already allowed in the C-one. So this just goes through that, that process of eliminating all references to O-one in the zoning ordinance appropriately. So there's no change, we, you really didn't have any comments on that. There were, there were some minor inclusions in this amendment to the creation of an mixed district, but as we get to the amendment two, and creating an overlay, that was no longer necessary. So these are just all about eliminating any reference to O-one in our current ordinance. I don't know if you have any more.
Did we have any, you know, comments on the first amendment of office? Everybody satisfied with that, finally?
Yeah.
Okay. What about the next use, son?
Yes. So then, the big recommendation, I think was a good idea, was rather than create a brand-new mixed district, mixed-use district, the idea to create an overlay district. This is a process that is used in other communities, and it can be pretty effective, and it would allow for the existing underlying, existing zoning of the, of the properties to remain, and the mixed use would be a overlay that would basically grant additional use, uses within these, this, these overlay areas, and would allow, but would also apply specific design standards to those. So beginning on page eight, we go through revise, I revised the, slightly, the purpose section, basically trying to, to focus on the, the intent and purpose outlined in the master plan. Then section three, three-point-four, point, excuse me, one fifty-four-point-three-four-one, the overlay district established, that's a, some standard language that's necessary to identify this as an overlay above the existing over, underlying districts. And then, in section one fifty-four-point-three-four-two, this is where we list our permitted uses. Last time we discussed it, you, rather than just having some of my recommended uses, you wanted to include the entire list of uses in the C-one and C-two, and then go through them. So, but one thing I was thinking when I looked at this is to give you an option. So option one is a list of all uses that are currently allowed. Item one through item thirteen are all the permitted uses in our C-one district. Item fourteen through nineteen are all our permitted uses in the C-two district. And then twenty through twenty-three are, well, twenty is, and twenty, twenty and twenty-three are found in both. They allow for the accessory structures and allow for the interpretation of other uses. And then twenty-one and twenty-two is the idea of allowing residential uses in the mixed use. So that's one option, if we can, we can go through that exercise right now and eliminate what you don't think should or shouldn't be allowed. But one other popular option for, for an overlay district is to, is to reference and to understand there's already zoning on these properties. And so in option two, that begins on page nine, we simply state that the property in the mixed-use overlay, they can, those properties can be used in accordance with their permitted by right, or maybe permitted by special land use approval, uses in the underlying zoning district. So basically, the properties retain what they're, what they're allowed to have, and then the mixed-use overlay allows other additional uses, such as, so, such as the townhouses, live-work units in that aspect. So I wanted to give you an option.
I, I think, I think option two for me comes closer to what I was looking for than option one. Earlier on though, it, the language seemed to prohibit some of the uses that are allowed in the underlying districts. And, let's see, forty G, I think it was? That, maybe I'm not understanding it quite right, but it, it, maybe it's just not clear enough that we don't want to prohibit what's already there, we just want to add to it and make it permissible to do a little more.
Yeah.
And, and then later on, in option two, I forget exactly, but we can, we can be more specific maybe about, or maybe we don't need to, about what would be allowed to be mixed use out of those already approved uses in, in the other district. And actually, I think if we're talking about primarily the future land use map for mixed use, some of that even goes over C-three.
In, in term, oh, in terms of what's proposed in the future land use map?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's the same area that we're talking about making our overlay for, we haven't really talked about boundaries for the overlay.
I do believe that actually a major, I mean, what the heck?
The majority's probably C-one, C-two, but I know we have a, one or two gas stations.
True. And, yeah, like, like the Shell gas station that's going, or being refurbished right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, and my apologies, I, I didn't have the opportunity to create a, a draft overlay map to start that discussion, but, um...
We can, we can work on that later, I suppose.
Yeah. Yeah, there are at least, within the blocks that are identified in the master plan, there are one, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different properties that are, that are C-three, that are, so we'll have to go through that exercise of indicating where the overlay is and seeing if the underlying districts are appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, the overlay could go over C-three districts, but maybe for some of those, we would say that those properties weren't appropriate for use as a mixed-use property, even though they're in the overlay.
Or, or we can simply just draw, draw the overlay around the sites. Yeah, because that's, that's something that's, you know, that can be done. We can create the overlay in any property that's, that's suitable. So, and then, and, yeah. No, that's, yeah, so I, I...
I don't want to eliminate any existing uses or, you know, in any of the other districts, whether it's C-one, C-two, or C-three.
Okay.
By, by putting the overlay, and I want to make sure that it's understandable that where the overlay is, that makes it permissible to make it a mixed use, but not mandatory.
Right. Yes. And so I have made notes that, that section point-three-four, paragraph B, to eliminate that idea of prohibiting, prohibiting anything, just so that way there's, it's clear that we're not trying to prohibit anything, we're just trying to encourage the possibility of owners, property owners, to utilize this as an option, and that it's permissible to them.
What paragraph is that again?
One fifty-four dot three forty, paragraph B, where it says this district prohibits those types.
District prohibits those types.
Yeah, so I can eliminate that and change that language to be more about encouraging people to consider this as an option for their property.
Yeah, and if we, if, maybe, you know, under purpose, if we can actually put in the language saying that it, it is an option, not a requirement, something to that effect.
Yep.
This provides an option in addition to...
Yeah.
In addition to the rights that are already permitted to them by their current zoning designation.
Yeah.
Sure.
So maybe a naive question, as the new guy here.
No.
Does that essentially mean that there's just optionality?
Right.
If I'm the landowner, I can go with, with either zone.
You've got a C-two which allows this, but because it's a M U O, it also allows these additional items if you were to choose.
I wouldn't have to necessarily pick one.
No.
It would really just be, they both...
We'll just expand our options.
I got it, I got it.
Yeah, and because with every, every zoning district, there's a list of principal permitted uses, which as a property owner with that zoning designation, those are permitted by right, meaning you just have to meet your certain requirements of that use. However, then there are also specialty land uses, which do require them, a property owner, if they so choose to do that use, to, to come and receive site plan approval and special, excuse me, special use approval from the planning commission, from you guys, for, for that, those particular uses. And then this overlay would give them the option of having, of adding to the amount of principal permitted uses and special uses we wanted, that could be permitted on the site. that could be permitted on the site by the property owner.
So what that would do for the property owner is allow him to advertise to a broader base of potential occupants for his property?
And that's kind of in line with what we've been doing lately with our ordinance amendments. We revised the mixed, the industrial district to widen the uses there. And we've been doing that with other options. So I think this would just give property owners another opportunity for their site. And so Fred, I know you mentioned your preference for the option two. Is that the feeling of other commissioners? That option?
Yeah, yeah. About the options?
Yeah.
I'm good with option two.
Well, yeah, I guess we can go with option two, basically.
And then so basically, you know, it allows for the overlay, but really the list, the list of uses is, is the townhouse use, a multi-family dwellings, and then a live-work type unit. Are there any other types of options for a residential unit that you'd want to see within the mixed-use overlay? It pretty much covers them.
Yeah, I don't know what else we would include. I mean, we don't want a living unit on the same level with business, do we? Don't we want it above?
The only thing it would say is that in some instances, there have, they make it work where with a live-work unit, the front of the unit is the retail or the service or the, the open to the public type of situation on the same floor. To the rear, sometimes is either a workshop type situation or even living space. Some, some, I've seen it in other communities where the living space is to the rear.
Would be more appropriate for the townhouse thing, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Would we want to include that specifically in the development standards that the?
Have we added any of the development standards to what we already have?
Well, on page ten, a lot of those are, are new, because I've, I've created them based on my experience with other designs, under, under the paragraph one. So section one thirty, 154 dot three forty-two A one, mixed-use building shall be designed to the following standards. A through E are some recommended design standards that I drafted. See what you, your opinion were on those type of elements.
Apparently, we don't have any design standards for that area, do we?
No.
So this is all?
Yes.
No, I think it's a good idea to have some design standards.
As, as we talk about this, when are we due to up, update our five-year plan again?
Uh, I think it's next year. I don't, it's not.
The reason I ask is, many years ago, we talked about possibly site plan condominiums or townhouses if Kmart were to ever leave. Well, that's happened. And in our future land use, I think it would be good to revisit that potential. And if possible, have that as part of this, this overlay. In the event that L.A. Fitness should change their mind based on COVID, based on the current economy, et cetera, et cetera. You know, we talk about a walkable downtown. There's no place to live downtown except the senior center. And we had a potential for a, a possibility of living close to the downtown area with the former real estate office. And some of us didn't like that idea. I, I thought bulldozing up the back one-third of the property and making that a seating area so far as families and whatnot, if I have six kids, I'm definitely not going to look at that type of property for someplace to live. So.
No, but I think it's important to keep in mind that when it comes to these type of units, what you're trying to do is create a full continuum of housing alternatives for someone to, for the, for the lifespan. So if someone wants to be a lifelong resident of Garden City, they could go from a starter home to a young family home, like a little bit bigger, to a little bit bigger with a mature family home where you need more bedrooms for, you know, your teenage, your teenagers and that sort of thing. But then also to get to the point where empty nesters and then others that would still want an active lifestyle could downsize and have that. And then also you want to allow for, in addition to not just a lifestyle of that kind of spectrum, what's also called in the, in the, in the planning granacular, missing, uh, making sure to have those different square footage options in the unit types to allow for people to have different alternatives for housing. Some, and a lot of times what happens is you have, not so much in the city, but we are part of the continuum in the metro Detroit area of, of certain type of housing units. But sometimes there's, you either have apartment buildings, which I have multiple, you know, twen, tens, twenties, fifty apartments on one site, or you just go with single-family homes. In between there and other communities, they do have things like duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, even seven units that are more, that are more attractive to, once again, empty nesters or young adults, too. And that's, that's typically called, because it's in the middle, it's been called missing middle housing. Because that type of housing, you don't get, usually see a lot in communities. You see, in Garden City, we have all our single-family homes. We have our apartment complexes.
We have a few of the.
We have a few.
Not much.
Not much. And so the, the probability of, of having this, I'm not saying that this would solve that specifically, but it opens up the door for those different housing alternatives. And that's what you'd be doing.
Well, without locking us into that in the future, would we be able to tell prospective developers that that's a possibility?
Yes, and it's something we could promote and something, as I discussed with property owners, when, because there have been times when property owners, they get, they get a little, it's just say, consternated by their zoning designation because they can't find a retailer to operate their site. And they want to know, well, what can I put here? And I have to, I tell them, well, this is the district right now. So giving them more opportunities, I think, would be beneficial.
I think that, you know, if, if things does fall apart with L.A. Fitness, then that would certainly be an option that we'd be willing to look at.
And the good thing is that L.A. Fitness is in the CBD zoning district right now. And they are, and we do have our standards for residential design for that. So inside the CBD, we're taking care of, what this is doing, this would create on the perimeter, well, will decide whether it's just the perimeter of the CBD district or further out, giving those property owners the same kind of opportunities the CBD owners have.
And we have a, a lot of good examples of this type of stuff in our immediate area. Looking at the, there's really two downtowns in Dearborn. There's.
Right.
Schaefer and then the west side downtown.
Yeah.
But if you look at both sides of that downtown, the east and the west, they've heavily, heavily incorporated residential in the form of condominiums and townhouses and apartments, all, some right on their main street of Michigan Avenue and some immediately adjacent to it. When, when retail, when bullocks and wards and, and all that vacate at the area, they fill those spots in beautifully.
Yeah.
And it's a very walkable area because there's that high concentration of C one, C two activity along with the R one activity or multifamily activity.
And you know, that makes, that brings up a good point. I don't know if, I don't want to get too theoretical in this discussion, but real quickly to bring up the idea, I've been having some discussions recently with the fire marshal with some of our commercial operators, that they're trying to do proposed uses and fit them on sites that frankly aren't, don't have the size for the, for the customers, for the property owner's vision. And so we're going to be, we're, we're forced to walk a line of allowing them a perceived use without, while trying to make them provide the required parking and the required square footage they need. So when it comes to these type of opportunities we're giving to property owners, one thing I just realized that you might want to consider is allowing the overlay district to actually extend beyond the commercial properties into the adjacent residential. This would be a way in which the adjacent residences would be, they would maintain their own, their single-family opportunity. They wouldn't necessarily, they wouldn't have any type of direct impact on them just by, by, by any kind of increased intensity of use. But it would give property owners, commercial property owners, the opportunity to acquire the homes to the rear that are adjacent to them and develop them as possibly meeting that square footage requirement. Because honestly, looking at this, it is giving, it will give the commercial property owners more alternatives. However, they're going to have to try and find a way to fit these type of uses and the parking, most specific, specifically, on their sites. There are definitely some sites that will benefit from it. I can think of a few right now that would be perfect because they already have the square footage available. But in certain areas, there might not be that opportunity. And I'm not, I understand, you know, the residences. I know.
Now we're talking about intruding into residential area.
Right, exactly. And the residential neighborhoods are sanct or sanct and they are, they are important. And I think that's one of the reasons the Garden City is very attractive is because we protect the residential. But I just wanted to throw that out there as just something for you to think about as we go, go to the next step of looking at the map.
Well, why don't we get back to this? We were talking about the development standards. Was there anything else you wanted to point out with the development standards that you added?
Uh, just some other things, actually, to make sure that these uses don't impact the neighborhoods negatively, making sure there's no outside storage of anything, that warehousing beyond, beyond normally, what's normally permitted from a retail standpoint is prohibited. Parking required in the rear yard to try and encourage the, the residential, encourage the buildings to the front property line. Some of the language is also just an encouragement. For example, that vehicular access should be provided at the rear or side of the lot when possible. Obviously, some units will, some properties will require access from Ford Road or whatever their main road is. But where possible, possibly to utilize the side entrance or rear. And then also not to forget the pedestrian paths or interior sidewalks, because depending on how the sites are designed, to not forget that people have to walk from their units to the rest of the sidewalk system. So to have a nice pedestrian circulate, a safe, separate sidewalk system to get from, say, a, a building that would be in the rear to out to the, for the sidewalk.
Okay, well, I think we're on the right track with the next use. So if you can make those changes for our next look at it.
Mm-hmm.
And then did you want to go over anything for therapeutic massage?
Well, and also, if I could, amendment three, the, the smoking-related issues. The only thing we really mentioned there was, on page twelve, we talked about this a little bit. The main, from what I recall in our discussion, the main change was just to make sure under 154 dot 168, the hookah clubs, paragraph A, you suggested the hours of operation are similar to other bars and bars, meaning that they can't operate, they can operate, operate past, they cannot operate past two AM.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. Everybody still okay with that?
But beyond that, everything else is the same. We're just shoring up the language to make sure that they abide by state exemption requirements, because that's what the people will get as an exemption for these. And making sure that there's a clear delineation between hookah lounges, hookah clubs, excuse me, and cigar lounges and that they're, the future uses cannot try and walk that line and come in, ask a cigar and get hookah in there.
I'm sorry. I had a question about that when I read this through the first time. The fact that we have medical marijuana and now we've legalized it for public use, it, it could inevitably fall under the same category as cigarettes, cigars, pipes and whatnot. Do we want to look at a cigar lounge with the possibility that, that marijuana as a public use could, could be used in there in conjunction with cigars possibly?
Well, right now, the only way that, the only method that, that could establish a place where people can consume marijuana publicly is they would have to, the M R A created these consumption establishment licenses. As far as I know, there aren't any permitted in the state at all just yet. No, no community has allowed for these just yet. And so in terms of any future change that would suddenly, you know, over time allow that, you know, that would be dependent in the future and that would, we would have to amend these, these ordinances accordingly at that time. Right now, it specifically says, under cigar lounge, that this establishment shall not include any establishments licensed. So right now, we're, we're abiding by the state law with these. And so any change to that in the future, we'd have to go back and amend it then.
Yeah, okay.
Because right now.
I was wondering, now that they, we voted on it and made it legal, if that wasn't, something should be considered, but yeah. In the future.
Yeah, with therapeutic massage, actually, with our discussion when we talked about this, because this is trying to make sure there's a clear, clear distinction between those licensed types of massages that are, that are licensed by the state and those that are, that do not require a license. I haven't been, heard any opinions yet about whether we can just prohibit unlicensed massage specifically. Unfortunately, it's kind of one of those issues where it might seem like a good idea to just specifically prohibit them. From a land use standpoint, it's kind of hard to justify when you put an outright ban on a use. It's something that's just not usually encouraged. So that's why, that's the reason we have our restricted, regulated uses. And that's the reason why we only allow them in our C three, under special land use, after they've received fifty percent of the residents, excuse me, fifty percent of the property owners and residents within three hundred feet of the site, you know, getting their sign off before they can even approach the, the planning commission and Z B A for any kind of approval. So that's, that's the reason why we have our regulated uses. It's not saying, we're not saying they're prohibitive. We're saying they, they.
There's a lot of hoops there.
They, they have to.
If your neighbors are good with it, we're good with it.
Right. If I, if I find any other thing further on that, I'll, I'll let you know. But when it comes to land use law, it's just pretty, it's not good policy to try to outright ban a particular use.
Okay.
So that's why this section, it really hasn't changed to what you see.
Just clearing up language and.
Yeah.
Differentiating between licensed and unlicensed.
Right. I'm trying to make sure that no one is, that only licensed activities and those activities that are just done in a particular, in like in a hair salon, you know, I think it's called the head, neck and face massages are permitted.
Can you just clarify C for me? I was, I was trying to, I was rereading this where it says, therapeutic massage facilities shall only offer massage therapies which are licensed pursuant to public act, et cetera. And then it says unlicensed, et cetera, et cetera. That is not required are prohibited.
Inside a therapeutic massage facility.
They can't call themselves a therapeutic massage if they're unlicensed.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's exactly what it is. They can't say, oh, we're a therapeutic massage facility, and then they're allowing unlicensed massages to happen. The only activity in a therapeutic massage facility is a licensed therapy. Yes, sir.
Who licensed then?
The state.
Which, which part of it?
Uh, Lara, licensed regulatory administration. They have. Uh, Lara, Licensed Regulatory Administration. They have a website actually that I can check for a person's license.
Okay. That's all.
They license everybody.
Oh, do they?
Yeah, and estheticians to massage therapists.
Just the medical marijuana, because we always hear the Lara with, with that. Okay, it's a umbrella.
Well, actually, no, actually, the medical marijuana, the marijuana has gotten so big, they have their own acronym, the MRA. They only deal with the state licenses for all the ma, the marijuana uses.
Okay, we're good with the ordinance language then for now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes.
Do you want to get a tentative map when we, when we bring this back the next time? Do you want to have like a tentative idea of where we might want to?
Well, I don't know if there's a hurry. I mean, if
No.
If there's a rush, you can create a map to start with.
If you want, we could either go through an exercise where I just give you the regular zoning map and then you, and the future land use map, and then you can provide me with your input on where the, where it goes.
That'd be better.
Or, or I could, I could draw up a, a draft one and then you could critique that.
I think that's probably a good idea.
The first option?
The first option.
Okay.
Then we can, uh, draw around the C3 areas so we don't have to worry about gas stations and such.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay, well, moving on, uh, commissioner's comments regarding planning and zoning matters. Uh, Diane, did you have anything for us?
Nope, I have nothing tonight.
Mark?
Um, have we heard anything new from any of the things that are in limbo such as Dunkin' Donuts on Ford Road? Or, or LA Fitness?
Nothing from Dunkin' Donuts. Um, let me look at the map here. When it comes to LA Fitness, we actually just had a meeting on a separate project with the general contractor for LA Fitness.
Ah.
And he happened to mention that, oh, yeah, yeah, they're, they're coming in in the spring and they're ready for, to, to start working in the spring.
Next spring, huh?
Yeah, which is what we heard about last, what we heard about this fall, we heard about the summer, we heard about last spring.
We thought we'd be out of COVID by now too.
Well, yeah.
And they probably did too. From a business standpoint, it's got to be tough to make decisions.
Right.
Yeah, it probably has a lot to do with it. Otherwise, I think they would have broke ground and be up and operating
Yep.
a long time ago.
Um, going through other uses, as you probably see, the Shell station is getting close, closer. Um, but they're still, you know, have a ways to go because that is a elaborate construction project while allowing the, the, the operation to continue while they're doing construction. I know I haven't visited the site. And then going through other applications, really ones that are, that we're going through on a round of submittals are the medical marijuana, um, commercial facilities. They've submitted drawing, the 32330 Ford, which is a larger building that's technically on Hubbard, uh, excuse me, uh.
The one that has a Ford Road address?
Right, has a Ford Road address, but it's not on Ford Road.
Yeah, the old tool and.
It's on Hubbard, yep. They, um, they've completed their EPA required cleanups. They, they requested a, a slight reconfiguration of their park, proposed parking lot. And it was minor, so I felt it was okay to do, approve that administratively. I did provide them with some comments and now they're going to finish that. They're going to amend the revisions to adjust my comments to make sure that they're, I, I wanted to make sure there is enough, um, curbs and landscaping requirement in the parking lot and on the perimeter parking because they're going to have parking along Hubbard as well. Um, and then I just wanted to make sure they address the access points to make sure they're clearly defined. Those are the comments I had for them. Then there are, so they're preparing construction level drawings for their site. To the north of that, 5848 Hubbard, they, that was a meeting we had with Gleason and the property owner. I needed them to submit specific, uh, security plans and, um, for that use. Uh, so they're submitting those now. And then we did receive first level, construction level drawings for, forget the address, but it's the vacant lot next to Schaefer Screw on Industrial Road that was approved by you. They, as you recall, they, well, maybe you recall because it was so long ago, they did receive their approvals, all their approvals. Um, they did get an extension because they mentioned that COVID was an influencing factor. And then a week before their deadline that their site plan extension would expire, they did submit their building permit application. But now at this point, it was deficient with regards to landscaping and land and, um, lighting specifics in addition to the specifics for the mechanical system. So they, I, I, they're in the middle of redrawing their, their submittal, revising their submittal because they need, I need much more detailed drawings for that. But those are the other main ones that I can think of at the moment.
About the banquet hall across the street.
Yeah, the banquet hall actually is going to be contacted soon because their site plan approval ends in October. So they have to submit a site plan, a building level, excuse me, building permit application along with construction level drawing permit, drawings to get a building permit. If not, their site plan approval expires.
And the KD Furniture Store?
They're, believe it or not, they're actually working in there.
I, I see work.
They're walking off a dumpster.
Yeah.
I saw that too.
Yeah. There, I think, I don't know if it's, uh.
I don't know how much they could be tearing out. The building's empty, you know?
You got any ideas?
Yeah, I.
I think it's more about the construction because, believe it or not, they're creating these little cubicle type, exactly, for like room alcoves for a furniture.
With settings in them?
Exactly.
Yeah, that's cool.
So, but they're, they're trudging along.
Trudging along, okay. And I've, I've always been curious about this one last thing. There's a bakery in Sheridan Square that has the equipment in there and the name on the building, Persian Bakery. And it's been like that for three or four years.
That's right.
I'm wondering why they never opened. Is it, is it a total tax dodge of some sort? You, you, you leasing the space, you bought the equipment, it's all stainless steel and showcases, and it's never opened.
Where is that again?
It's in Sheridan Square in what used to be the main showroom for North Brothers. The part that's closest to the sidewalk and furthest west.
You mean the one that used to, uh, basically be a wholesale bakery?
No, it's.
And they closed and now it's some kind of Mediterranean?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a restaurant now.
It's a restaurant.
No, no, that's, you're thinking, uh, Ford and Harrison.
Mm-hmm.
Adjacent to the big boys.
No.
Uh-uh.
You're thinking, you're talking about crossing Harvage, right?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, it was the old subway, wasn't it?
No, Subway's on the other side.
Subway moved now.
Yeah, they're a little mall.
It was Subway, yeah.
And then it was a bakery?
Yeah.
Never was a bakery.
Well, it's sort of kind of a bakery now, but it's never operated.
I thought they opened up.
Yeah, it's actually a restaurant, a Mediterranean restaurant.
I've never seen it open though. It says it's open, but I've never seen anybody in there.
Well, I.
I saw somebody.
I saw somebody in there.
I saw anyone in there one time.
I guess that's why I didn't know it was a restaurant. I've never seen it open.
Just keep them in the.
Four years I've never seen it. I drive by and I see the sign that says Persian something or other and I've never seen anybody in it.
It was a bakery for the longest time and it was direft of activity for the longest time. But the restaurant was about four or five months ago that they got approved. Um, so they, they are in there. I have, once I did see people in there.
They probably can't hire nobody.
Yeah.
Nobody wants to work.
That could be.
Yeah, maybe that's it.
Lenny?
Uh, we talked about that, uh, Castelli building. What happened with that? Is that a apartment or is that an office?
It's, it's an office now.
They turned it into an office?
Yes.
So it didn't get approved by the?
Well.
The plan, yeah, yeah, you guy, right, you guys did approve an apartment, the, the city council denied it.
Oh, and so it went back to being an office? Okay.
Pharmacy.
I wondered why they didn't do the landscaping in the back.
Yep.
I mean, they, all they did was like painted the building, was like pretty much all I saw.
Yeah, well, now it's, it's run by a pharmacy.
Yeah, they did that real quick.
It's a pharmacy office distributor.
Okay.
Didn't like the idea of more people living in Garden City, huh? We're losing population every single year.
Okay.
Yeah, I do, I do have.
I'm all set, thank you.
Good.
I, I just have one, uh, housekeeping issue. Uh, back on the zoning ordinances, are you going to make a motion to call a public hearing or what, what was the next steps?
I believe we needed to revise the overlay district. I need to get rid of that other option, put in the option, and then give them, give you guys, uh, maps so you consider the, um, accompanying overlay map.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything. With Brian not here. All right, thank you.
Okay, well, I don't have anything. So, uh, next regular meeting is Thursday, October 14th. And, uh, you can entertain a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It needs adjournment.
Thank you guys, thank you.
A restaurant, you say?